If we can go ahead and call this meeting to order, I believe everyone's ready. Madam City Clerk, please, roll call. Oh, hold on. It's been enough years, I can't believe I messed that up. We'll first start with invocation from Reverend Alexander Conrad, and then we'll have the Pledge of Legions done by Mayor Pro Tem Shelley Sanderson. Will everyone please rise?
Let us pray. Almighty God, we thank you for this vibrant community of West Covina where we live, work, and play. We thank you for the hard work of everyone in this beautiful city, especially our City Council, our Mayor, Michael Tuohy, Mayor Pro Tem Shelley Sanderson, and Councilmember Steve Hurford, Robert Sotelo, and Frederick Sykes, and everyone else in West Covina who does their part to make this a healthy, exciting community. As we gather tonight, give us all a sense of peace and help us to work together in a spirit of unity. Amen.
Thank you. Please join with me to the pledge to our flag. Ready? Begin.
Okay, if we can have roll call, please. Madam City Clerk.
Mayor, Chairman Tuohy.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem, Vice Chairman Sanderson.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Hurford.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sotelo.
Here.
Councilmember Commissioner Sykes.
Here. A report out of closed session, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, and members of the Successor Agency. The record should reflect that the Successor Agency and the City Council convened a special meeting for closed session items this evening, that prior to recessing into closed session, the various items on both of those two special meeting agendas were announced for discussion. And the -- I'll start with Successor Agency. The record should further reflect that all five members were present, that they recessed into closed session for one item under conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. The Successor Agency was briefed by legal counsel. There was no final action taken and nothing further to report. The Successor Agency special meeting was adjourned at the conclusion of that meeting. Moving on to the special meeting of the City Council. Again, the City Council had various items on the agenda. Those items were announced for discussion prior to recessing into closed session. All five members were present. First item, under conference with labor negotiators, the various employee groups. The City Council received a briefing from the city's negotiators, but there was no final action taken from closed session. There's nothing further to report. Moving on to conference with real property negotiators. That matter was not discussed during the first session, and the City Council will be recessing back into the special meeting at the conclusion of the regular open meeting of the City Council. Under conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, two matters were presented to the City Council. On both of those matters, there was a discussion, however, there was no final action taken with respect to either of those two matters. Conference with legal counsel existing litigation, the City of Covina versus Hassan Imports partnership. The City Council received a briefing on that matter. There was no final action taken and nothing further to report. On the Mendoza versus City of West Covina matter, again, the City Council was briefed by legal counsel. The City Council unanimously authorized the payment of punitive damages in this matter for the officer involved, and that was a 5-0 vote. Moving on to the last item, which is public employment city manager. That matter was not discussed during the first session. Will be brought back at the end of this open session meeting. That concludes my report from closed session at this time. It's appropriate to continue with the open portion.
Thank you. Changes to the agenda, Mr. City Manager.
I have no changes, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. If we can have Robert Bryant, please come down here. We're going to be honoring him for it's the 17th Annual Good Neighbor Day program. Have flowers by Robert Taylor, and we'll let Bob, as I've known for many years. He aged better than me in high school, but talk about your program.
Okay. Hi, thank you very much. I'm from Flowers by Robert Taylor, brought off a citrus. For 17 years now, we've been doing a thing called Good Neighbor Day. It's something where we hand out a dozen flowers, asking you to keep one and hand 11 out to 11 different people tomorrow. This year, we've also included, we're also doing a blood drive with the Red Cross, trying to collect blood and help out, save people's lives. So if anybody can stop by, we're going to start handing out 7:00 AM tomorrow until the supply runs out. Normally, that's around 11 o'clock. Okay? So please stop on by.
Thank you, Bob. And on behalf of the City Council and the City of West Covina, we're pleased to recognize Flowers by Robert Taylor for your 17th Annual Good Neighbor Day program. Congratulations on your performance.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
We'll drop down to Oral Communications. Our first speaker tonight is Blanca Vinsor, and on deck is Carolyn Arnt. Blanca?
My name is Blanca Vinsor, and I'm here this evening to address Mr. Steve Hurford for his comment he made at the last council meeting. At the meeting, I addressed the much-needed awareness of the quality of the graffiti removal in this city. As I was walking out of the council meeting, you said, and I quote, something to the effect of, "Mrs. Vinsor never stays when we have to speak." And you also mentioned something about Mr. Sykes calls a graffiti company and says what a timely job they do. Were you listening? This was not about a timely manner. It was about the quality of the work. I will remind you that I have the right to leave at any duration of a council meeting. How dare you criticize me publicly, out loud, when you yourself routinely ignore those who come up to the podium to speak? I'm glad to have your attention. This is a form of retaliation and intimidation. I am not obligated to stay the duration of the meeting and listen to your repetitive rhetoric. But on the other hand, you do have to stay. After all, you were voted in by approximately 3,500 voters out of approximately 50,000 registered voters in a city of approximately 112,000 residents. This is your job. Just as a quick note, you sit there pompously stating, "People, the people have spoken." Do you realize that over 8,000 people signed the recall petition against you? Please beware, the residents are waking up. Do the Robert Rules of Order just apply to the constituents? Steve, you continuously demonstrate the non-professional, arrogant, and ignorant person representing this council. You have an obligation to the constituents. Therefore, I am requesting an apology for myself and the constituents that had to hear your disrespect to me. Is this how a councilperson behaves? Steve, stop taking things personal and listen to the people. I am a concerned citizen trying to help keep West Covina beautiful. This is what you need to understand. I am going to remind you, there are legal rights on both sides. With this said, I would like to thank Mayor Pro Tem Shelley Sanderson for her immediate attention to my concern of the graffiti removal. I'd also like to thank Mr. Glenn Kennedy of the Graffiti Company Removal Company for calling me the very next day to follow up. It takes a village to make a change. I am waiting for the apology because I may not stay for the remainder of the council No apology?
I don't have anything to apologize for.
Okay, okay. Yes, you do. You certainly do. But I want this on record.
Mr. Mayor, I think the Speaker is obligated to address her comments directly to the Mayor.
To the Chair, please.
Yes.
I understand. Thank you, Blanca.
You're welcome. Okay. I do want this on record.
Thank you. Carolyn Arnt, and Phil Moreno is on deck. Philip Moreno?
Good evening. My name is Carolyn Arnt. I've been here before, many, many times. I would first of all like to thank Fred Sykes for being the City Representative at the Summer Fest, at the South Hills Country Club, and helping to honor our city Citizen of the Year, Beverly Sykes. And she is here tonight. We thank you, Fred, and we are proud of Beverly for the service that she has given throughout many, many years here in West Covina. My next topic of concern is to you, Mr. Sotelo. You've been here several months, and your -- part of your time has been, I know, getting acquainted with what's going on at the City Council level. Orientation ought to be over by now. I have heard not a comment, not a question, nor an opinion. I'd like to see you take some project on, because there are tons of them that the city needs help with, and become very versed in that one so that you can help us. We don't need any puppets. We need someone who's thinking for us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Philip Moreno and Shirley Buchanan on deck.
Members of the Council, members of the city staff, members of the audience, my name's Phil Moreno, and I would like this to be addressed to the City Council and to all West Covina residents. The subject, Councilmember Mike Tuohy needs to be replaced on the West Covina Oversight Board. On Thursday, August 23rd, 2012, Councilmember Mike Tuohy walked out of the West Covina Oversight Board meeting that was being held in the West Covina City Council chambers. The meeting was not over, and Mr. Tuohy walked out because he disagreed that Caltrans was going to make a slide presentation to the Oversight Board. The members of the Oversight Board and many members of the audience in attendance were surprised by Mr. Tuohy's actions. When there are many West Covina redevelopment dollars at stake, one should think twice about what they say and do at these meetings. Not only was Mr. Tuohy's action uncalled for, it was rude to everyone in attendance. Mike Lee is an employee of the City of West Covina, and he is also a member of the West Covina Oversight Board. If Mr. Lee had walked out for the same reason that Mr. Tuohy did, and Mike Tuohy had stayed at the meeting, I am sure that Mr. Lee's supervisors would not have been very happy with Mr. Lee's behavior. He probably would have been given a verbal or a written reprimand, or be disciplined in any number of ways for being, quote, "unprofessional and rude." That would be a decision his supervisors would have to make. So why shouldn't Mr. Tuohy get the same treatment by the West Covina City Council? I asked Suzanne Manriquez. I sit right there. She's sitting directly in front of me. She is Los Angeles County Supervisor Gloria Molina's field deputy, who was sitting in front of me, and I said, "Will you please tell Gloria Molina what he just did?" And her answer was, "I won't have to, because they will." As she said that, she pointed up here to Carrie Sutkin and Gary Hertzberg, who are Gloria Molina's appointees to the West Covina Oversight Board. I, as a West Covina resident, was surprised and embarrassed for our city by Mr. Tuohy's action. I feel that West Covina residents would be better served if the City Council advised Mr. Tuohy that his behavior was unacceptable as an elected representative of West Covina. The City Council should admonish Mr. Tuohy and replace him on the Oversight Board. Two things should be noted. We are now represented not by Mike Antonovich, we're represented by Gloria Molina. We got a grant for members of the Fire Department. What do you think's going to happen the next time we need her help for a grant or anything that comes from state and federal dollars through the county of LA? It probably will go to Glendora, Baldwin Park, La Puente. There's politics being played here. The last thing we need is someone walking out on our county supervisors' representatives. I have a son, he's a Lieutenant Commander in the Navy. If the Navy sent my son to a meeting and he got up and walked out in the middle of it, what do you think his supervisors would say? I don't care, Mike. I don't care if you didn't like what was going on. You're supposed to represent the Navy. Sit there and just take it and then make your statement. I am glad that Mr. Lee was here. Mr. Lee made a statement about why he didn't like Caltrans. He represented our city very professionally, not our City Councilman. You walked out. You walked out, and me and everybody that put you in that seat. And I think you either owe them an apology, and everybody that was in attendance, or, Mike, you need to be replaced on that Oversight Board.
Thank you. Let me respond. Number one, I believe there was a Brown Act violation, and I'm not going to stay put and participate in the meeting if I believe public notice was not properly given. Number two, they were not on our agenda. Caltrans, the presentation was supposed to be from our successor agency regarding Caltrans. Caltrans was not on our agenda. The State of California came up after oral communications when the public was cut off. The public was only given five minutes to speak, and they were cut off at the podium. Caltrans went on to speak for 45 minutes on an item that was not theirs to speak on at that. They could have spoke during oral communications, and I frankly do disagree. What came up out of that meeting, and why I was appalled, is the county of Los Angeles has been speaking to Caltrans, who's trying to condemn our property, and they're not negotiating with us. So I find it offensive that potentially three members of the seven-member board are having private conversations with someone doing eminent domain against the City of West Covina. And I represent the City of West Covina. There's a financial benefit to the county of Los Angeles based on where those dollars go. So yes, I was offended. I thought it was a Brown Act violation. It was against our rules of order that we adopted that every member of the public gets five minutes. Okay? The Caltrans got 45. That's a matter of record, and I am offended at that. I'm also offended that Caltrans came and misrepresented information, and apparently, from what I understand, there was a big problem after I left because of their false information they gave. They couldn't come up with a date. It's going to come up later on. They served us a paper on Wednesday of this last week, that they need to answer on their item by today. They gave it to us on Labor Day weekend. We have to go through three different meetings to get every approval. We have to not only go through the city, the successor agency, the Oversight Board maybe, and the state of California. And I'm offended that a state agency will come up here when a county employee asks them to come. They brought 10 employees down here at a cost of $2,500 to our taxpayers, the state of California taxpayers, without it being on the agenda. How someone has that much power is offensive, that someone has that meeting outside of the public. And I disagree with you. You know, the gentleman who spoke, we can have our disagreements, but I'm not going to participate because we just had another member of the public talk about when he thought there was a Brown Act violation. So when I thought there was one, I left the room and did not want to participate. Okay? I just don't, that's -- I believe I have that prerogative, and I don't think I have to be forced to stay here and commit a Brown Act violation.
Our next speaker is Shirley Buchanan, and Ray Hernanes is the speaker on deck.
Kind of sounds like there's been a couple of meetings lately that have been a little contentious because it's kind of riled the residents. Good evening, Mayor Tuohy, Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson, and Councilman Hurford, Sotelo, and Sykes. For more than two years, West Covina taxpayer citizens that attend council meetings have been subjected to a display of the wrath of a longtime councilman who currently holds the position of the prestigious position of the Mayor of West Covina. Some citizens decide, decide many times at the meetings, that they do not have to spend their evenings listening to a repeat of what has been at least a 15-minute lecture directed to them by the Mayor. At the last council meeting was one of those times. Close to the end of the meeting, the Mayor, out of the blue, started berating a former councilman, now an assemblyman, for an alleged DUI that was still being heard by a jury. Then he began a review of incidents that had taken place when the current assemblyman was on the council, of which he was found not guilty on several of the charges. Why am I bringing this up tonight? Well, near the end of this same meeting, the Mayor continued his lecture about the actions of the assemblyman during the DUI stop and the eventual arrest by the policeman. For some unknown reason, I became one of his targets that night. He looked straight at me from behind the rail and said in so many words, "There is a mother of a police officer here tonight that has never come to the podium and denounced the assemblyman for his actions towards the police officer or for any of his other actions. If I am displeased by the actions of a legislator, I let the legislator know via a letter, not from this podium." There were several people in the audience that night that are familiar with the occupations of my children, and there was no other mother of a police officer in the audience except me. Mr. Tuohy, and I seem to be repeating two other people from the podium here, because I said, "I believe an apology for singling me out that night is due." You have had a long and, most of the time, honorable tenure on this council. I hope that bringing these incidents to your attention will help move you forward to more positive interactions with the residents in the time you have left as a Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray Hernanes and Herb Redholtz is on deck.
Good evening, Councilmembers. Good evening, Mayor. Tonight, I bring you a web streaming case study, if you will, and a point of clarification. My commentaries have always been web streaming only and only council meeting broadcast, never cable broadcast or a combination of both. I ask you to stay focused on web streaming only, please. I have called two cities and spoke to staff members and a city manager in regards to their web streaming costs. The following are the results, starting with City of Whittier. $16,000 is the annual web streaming cost for the city. $3,000 is the average annual camera operator cost at $25 an hour, five hours per council meeting, 40 meetings per year. They use a part-time staff assistant with five cameras. Zire technology is their system. $19,000 is their combined annual camera operator and maintenance web fee. City of Signal Hill, $16,000 is the annual web streaming cost. $5,500 is the annual camera operator cost, three cameras. They use a part-time camera operator from Charter Communications at $50 an hour, five hours per council, 40 annual meetings. Signal Hill does not broadcast Planning Commission meetings. $21,005 is their combined annual camera operator and maintenance cost. City of West Covina web choice, the option choice by council, was Agenda Item Number Three, February 7th, 2012. I provided you a copy of the agenda, so you can refer to that. $12,450 is the annual maintenance fee, which includes video of council and planning commission meetings. $30,000 was the PEG funds used for equipment upgrades, one camera and computer, and I believe software. $10,000 is the estimated annual camera operator cost at $50 per hour, average five hours per meeting at 40 annual council meetings and planning meetings. $22,450 is the combined annual web and camera operator cost. Now, after six months of approving this item number three, I still not saying a planning commission meeting. Let's compare. Agenda Item Number Two, dated February 7th to 12th, this option was not taken by the council. This was my choice. $11,800 was the annual maintenance video council meeting broadcast alone. $13,000 was the PEG funds that were used for the upgrade of one fixed camera. $5,500 is the estimated cost of a camera operator at $50 an average, five hours per council meeting, 40 annual meetings, using a part-time staff. Again, I never have brought up a full-time person. $17,300 is the estimated annual web and camera operator cost for West Covina. $5,151 realized savings for Agenda Number Two compared to Number Three, which council elected not to use. Frankly, this would have covered the cost of a part-time camera operator. $17,000 of PEG funds were used for planning and council meeting Agenda Item Number Three, which council elected to use. I understand computers and software were needed according to staff for the need of the Planning Commission meeting broadcast. Would you not need a computer operator? How was this addressed in the budget? Since staff tells us we cannot afford a camera operator, however, we can afford a computer operator. Can anyone explain how that works? Facts are, we have close to $400,000 in PEG funds that can be used to improve the West Covina web broadcasting equipment. In closing, Mayor Tuohy. I ask you again, place this item on the agenda, direct staff to come up with a solution. Forget the cable. Forget the Planning Commission meeting. Forget the delays. I ask, how can this council take the position of a do-nothing attitude and continue to say this city cannot afford the camera operator for a quality web broadcast when 50 other cities are doing it? Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. Herb Redholtz and Win-Win Zane?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Councilmembers. At your last meeting, resident Lloyd Johnson came forward with a couple of proposals relating to city council elections, one of which was to limit council service to three terms and also to cap campaign spending at $30,000. And I am up here tonight to strongly support both of those ideas. On one level, it serves to level the playing field for residents that wish to seek a city council post. It gives, it gives people a chance to have somewhat of an opportunity to go up against entrenched incumbents, be they friend or foe. It gives you, I think it gives people more of a chance to go up against incumbents and perhaps get elected. I would ask one of you to, oh, let me just say this, that none of you, I don't think any of the majority would be affected by these proposals if they were to go through. And I would ask one of you to agendize this item, at least for council discussion, and see where it might go. I would also, on another subject, I've been informed that there is action being taken regarding the vacant Blockbuster Building at Amar and Azusa, which you may be aware, since it closed, has been in a horrible condition. The landscaping, and I laughingly use that term, has gone to pot. Well, not literally pot, but it's, it's gone down, it's horrible. And I understand that there is litigation, legal action, being taken between the property owner and the city that hopefully will resolve that, because that, as you know, excuse me, as you know, is a heavily traveled intersection in this city. And to have that building in the condition it's in, surrounding it, it's a bus stop and all kinds of stuff there that people see, and it should never be allowed to get into that horrible condition. My last topic is, finally, the announcement that Walmart is coming to Eastland Center. And unlike some comment I've heard in the paper and on some websites, I welcome Walmart to West Covina. You know, that Walmart is going to bring in reportedly a half a million dollars to the general fund every year. That's a million dollars in two years, and $2 million in four years, and this city, like almost every other city, is strapped for cash. And we need the money. The other thing is, it's going to employ a couple of hundred people. Are they high-end jobs? Most likely not, but they're jobs. And if you ain't got one, you take one. And I think that there will be a residual, I don't think it's going to have a negative effect on other neighboring centers. I think the more, the more consumers you bring into an area, the better chance other centers will have of siphoning off some of those people. It could help those other centers. So I'm happy So I'm, I'm happy to, to, to see them come in. It's much better than, than having an empty shell there. And I support the fact, and I'm happy, that we'll have several hundred thousand dollars a year coming into the general fund that we desperately need. So I welcome them to West Covina when they do come. Thank you.
Thank you. Wenwen, and then Philip Kaufman? I'm sorry. I don't...
Good evening, Mayor Tuohy, Mayor Patan Anderson, city council member Herford, Sterro, and Sykes, and city manager Mr. Passman, and staff members and residents. My name is Wenwen Zhang, and I'm the West Covina Library Manager. And tonight, I'm very excited to tell you that we are celebrating the one-hundredth birthday of the County of Los Angeles Public Library. So this Saturday, we will have a county-wide celebration. And the celebration at the West Covina Library will begin at two o'clock. And I would like to invite you, all of you, to come and join us at a party. The Los Angeles County Library was founded in nineteen twelve. September the fifth, nineteen twelve, the County of Los Angeles Board of Supervisors voted to create a free library. So the first branch was established in nineteen thirteen in one room of a resident in Willowbrook and with a collection of fifty books. And today, the County Library has developed and become one of the major libraries in the nation. And now we have eighty-five libraries and including the West Covina Library. Well, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about our West Covina Library. And our West Covina Library was founded in nineteen fifteen. Well, it looks like our centennial is coming up pretty soon. And our, our library was housed in Sunset School at first, and it was moved a, several times. And in nineteen sixty-one, it settled here at the current location, at West Covina Civic Center. And the library was designed as the first regional headquarters library. And now, our library still serves as the East Regional Headquarters Library. And, um, well, in addition to a traditional book collection, and we also offer newspapers and magazines and audiobooks and music CDs and movies and, and many other specialized materials, including the online databases. And we also offer public computers, Wi-Fi, and homework assistance, study rooms, and many other services and programs. And I'm very proud to tell you that our library is very, very well-used in our circulation, which means, you know, the materials checking and out was ranked the second among eighty-five county libraries. I'm very proud of that. Well, again, on, on behalf of the West Covina Library staff, and I wanted to invite you, all of you, to join us at a centennial celebration party. And the party will begin at two o'clock in the meeting room, and we will have cakes, of course, ice cream and games, a lot of fun. And we will also have presents for everyone to come to the party. So I hope to see you all at the library. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Phil, and we have Elsie Messman on deck. Elsie.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council and staff, my name is Phil Kaufman. I've been a homeowner in West Covina for over thirty years. I also like to make some comments about some things that were said at the last meeting two weeks ago, those comments made by council member Herford. He chose to unleash a diatribe against members of the government of the state of California, in particular, members of the state legislature, saying, among other things, that they do nothing for the people of the state of California and that they do not deserve our support. Well, in the ten days since legislative session, the last legislative session that occurred following our last meeting, the state legislature passed numerous bills in that time alone, to the great benefit of the people of the state of California. While voter suppression laws have been passed in state after state across this country, denying the right to vote to specific groups of citizens of the United States, the state legislature of California passed Assembly Bill fourteen thirty-six, making it easier for people, for citizens of the state of California to vote, extending the time to register to vote up until and including the date of the election. The legislature in the last two weeks passed the final elements of the Homeowners' Bill of Rights, making it easier for prosecution of unscrupulous lenders, including making it possible for there to be cross-county prosecutions of crim, the criminal elements who have preyed on homeowners across the state. They've extended the statute of limitations for such criminal actions from one year to three years. They passed a rights bill giving new rights to tenants who were the victims of foreclosures with, with literal, little or no knowledge that a foreclosure was even pending. After the horrendous events in Aurora, Colorado, the state legislature in the past week passed a bill banning the open carrying of rifles, loaded or unloaded, in the pub, in public areas in the state of California. After the events detailed at the University, Pennsylvania State University, the state legislature passed legislation making it a crime for university officials and athletic personnel to fail to report known instances of abuse. The state of California legislature passed new laws making it possible for farm workers to file civil lawsuits against their employers for failure to follow state regulations, giving them to write, to water, to shade, to various needs in working in that horrendous environment. And last, the, just, just these few items passed in the last few days, they increased the penalties for texting while driving, further protecting the citizens of California on our roads. I think the legislature continually does things to the benefit of the state of California. They deserve our support. And the last thing that he mentioned was that we should be against any tax increases. I think we need to support and to vote for Proposition Thirty to make those, the high-income earners in the state of California pay their fair share for all the benefits that the state legislature has provided us. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Elsie Messman and Forrest Wilkins on deck.
Good evening, Mayor, council staff, and everyone here tonight. My name is Elsie Messman, a resident of West Covina. At our last council meeting, I walked out after hearing Councilman Herford rant and rave about Roger Hernandez. That's not what the meeting was for. Roger Hernandez was innocent until proven guilty. This is past history, so get over it and let's go on. And you should be doing, trying to do, fix the mess you got us into, okay? And I'm also here tonight to talk about the Oversight Board. Okay, I attended that meeting also on August twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. And by the way, anybody here tonight or watching can go to the meetings, that they are, they're open to the public, and there are, the next meeting is supposed to be scheduled for October fourth at four o'clock in these chambers. Okay, I, I was displeased over Mayor Tuohy's had the nerve to walk out of a meeting, which he is supposed to be representing, the city of West Covina. Item D on the agenda had to do with Caltrans. There was a lot of money involved in this project. Apparently, Mayor Tuohy was accepted because Caltrans was there, was present for their side. This is not, this is a two-sided story. So it's an open meeting, and I think that everybody should be able to attend. Mayor Tuohy, you should be ashamed of your behavior, and you are acting like a little child. You finally ran into a group that can put you in your place and that you can't bully. If you are not going to represent West Covina in a true, professional manner, then you should resign. Okay? Thank you.
Once again, on the Caltrans matter, and it was stated at the meeting, Caltrans made an initial offer to us of thirty-six dollars a square foot for our property, and they made a subsequent offer of three dollars a square foot. You may call that negotiating in good faith. I'm appalled at that, and to come down to a meeting, and I still say, and if we get someone else minutes, we would get beat up on that. They spoke after oral communications, and they were not on the agenda. So I am offended. If you read the letter they sent to us that we just received, it's even more offensive that we've been waiting for them to contact us. They said they would set up a meeting with us. They sent us the letter on August twenty-ninth. They said they wanted to have a meeting by September fourth, because they needed action by September fourth. They never phoned. They sent us on Labor Day weekend the letter. We still have not received phone calls from them. And again, I'm fighting for the public, okay? You may consider ninety percent reduction in the offer, but that, to me, is offensive to offer thirty-six dollars initially, then three dollars a square foot after that, and then state at a public meeting that no council member was at, but the staffs of both agencies, that they will make a third offer, and they have not made a third offer, number one. Number two, everyone has to be notified. And in fairness, you may have had the County of Los Angeles invite Caltrans down. Westfield is an affected property owner. So is the City of Los Angeles Pension Fund, who owns the lakes bonds. They're an affected property owner, the owner of the lakes. California Pizza Kitchen, everyone else should be notified. You can't just have a meeting involving their property and not have them to the party. And I still find that offensive. And again, we will always respectfully disagree. I believe that everyone should have been invited to the table that was involved, not just someone working with the County of Los Angeles. Forrest Wilkins, and then Beverly Balthus is on deck.
Good evening, city council, mayor. It's two weeks ago we had our last council meeting, wasn't it? Two weeks ago tonight? Well, two weeks ago tomorrow morning, I was taking a walk by Cortez Park. I don't make a daily walk, but sometimes I walk around the neighborhood. And right at the entrance there at the park on Citrus, there's this geyser going off, sprinkler going straight up. And you look around, and there's the rotating sprinklers going around. And of course, you can see the dryness of the lawn around there. So after I got home, I called the West Covina Maintenance Department. I explained the situation, and I described where it was. He'd come in the driveway, and there's that recoilless rifle that's there and a picnic table. And I don't know the, I don't recall the person I talked to. But anyway, he seemed to be familiar with what the area's talking about. And he left me with confidence that he was going to take care of it. Now, we didn't need to have a committee meeting or anything. He took care of it. I think Shelley Sanderson's probably knowing where I'm going to go with this. Now, we have Athens. Athens has a contract with Redondo Beach, less than fourteen dollars for trash pickup. Athens made a big, a bid for sixteen dollars and change in Rosemead. We pay twenty-six dollars and change. I've addressed this council numerous times in the last nine months, requesting that it get signed to city staff to review why we have a evergreen contract. And I think, Mayor, to borrow your words, but I think the citizens of West Covina will probably find it offensive that we're paying twenty-six dollars for our trash, and there's other cities that are paying much less than we are. In talking, my research, in talking with public works directors in various cities, I'm asking their opinion on how come there's this variance in charges. One public works director says, "Well, it's all up to the city council what kind of contract they negotiate." You know, it kind of reminds me of, since we're here in the Los Angeles area, we have a lot of Hollywood and so forth, you know? Humphrey Bogart was in a film, and Saturday Night Live used the same line, and Blazing Saddles used the same line. The line is, "Badges, badges, we need no stinking badges." So my parallel to that is committee, committee, which Mayor Protem Sanderson has suggested has invited me to come and meet with her and the city manager. There's no need for that. It's quite evident that we're paying more than we should. You know, when you reflect on the fact that Athens was fined a half a million dollars over twenty-three years ago for price fixing, and I've mentioned it before, you know, stripes of a tiger probably don't change. Let me ask you this question. At some point in time, we know the city manager's going to leave, right? If we had an applicant to that position, and he had a little, just a little mark in his past that he had taken funds that he shouldn't have, would you consider that individual for the city manager? Of course not. Athens does not have a good record. You know, consolidated trash collecting. In the newspaper reported, they're going to provide the same service at Rosemead that Athens provides for us. Extra pickup, heavy-duty pickup, provide things for the community. You know, you really need to review this. I think more and more citizens are getting information on this, and they cannot understand fourteen, less than fourteen dollars a month, twenty-six dollars a month. Thank you.
Thank you, Forrest. Beverly, and our last speaker is Bruce Leinbach.
Hi. I live, my, my name is Beverly Balthus. I live on Francis Guido between Valenda and Indian Summer, the street that is on your consent calendar tonight. Many of my neighbors join Ray and I in thanking Traffic Committee, Sharon Yancey, and the council for allowing us to have no parking signs posted for street sweeping days. At least, I hope that you're going to do follow-through with that. The, the parking has been quite a problem on our street. We have, one of our neighbors obviously sells cars. So come the weekend, the, the, the street, we can have ten cars out there. And Monday morning, the street sweeper comes by, driving right through the middle of the street. So we really appreciate the, the city council and the city allowing us to have those. Thank you.
Thank you, Beverly. And Bruce Leinbach, our last speaker. Bruce?
Ah, first of all, I want to let know that the, the, this Friday, you got the famous West Covina South Hills Bulldog Husky Football Bull. It's going to be played at the, should be a good game. It's going to be played at the Covina, uh, Sou, Covina Field. So show up, game's at seven o'clock. Also, I want to recognize, one speaker already did, but I want to reiterate my appreciation for Bev Balthus. She's been a member of her church, always involved in everything, law with the Historical Society, West Covina Beautiful. And one thing I say about her, her heart and soul bleeds her West Covina spirit. I mean, very few people you have, see that involved. She has a low profile, but she has her, has it in the right place. Okay, I'm, I pass these editorials out just to show you. It shows that this issue has been around for four years. And one was, I wrote editorial myself, and then it was all the Tribune voted, and it says, "Keep council broadcasts." That was four years ago. Four years ago, you decided, you said, "For financial reasons, we couldn't afford it anymore." Of course, you had it up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which I think was unjustified, uh, which I, it was, it shouldn't have been that much, but you could have pruned it back and had the cost go, you know, substantially less, which would have been more affordable. You keep on saying, "Oh, we can't afford a hundred and eighty thousand dollars," and then you just basically shut it down, didn't try to make any amends, try to make any, uh, to improve the situation. Like I said, I, like I said, I surveyed ten cities around here, uh, and they all have two cameras. The camera that we had, that's been installed, got a lot of complaints. All you do is gain one camera. Now, Mr. Herford made a statement, he said, "Well, why don't you bring the camera closer?" And I don't know, you bring it closer, you want to see the face of the, of the, of the speaker and the faces of the council, and also the faces of the, of the staff over there. And one camera, you're not going to do it. And that's one thing, I mean, he called it viewer-friendly. As far as viewer-friendly, I think it flunks the test. Also, one thing is, all these other... Some cities use staff members, walnut use college interns. So there's many ways to approach this. And like I say, we have like $53 million, and Mr. Tui has pointed out that we're going to have a lot of, we're going to have an increase in our general fund because of Walmart, furniture store, whatnot. So I think it's within a feasibility of completing. Covina has two cameras. The cost is $60,000. Now, one thing that we have, in other 50 cities, is probably one of the highest balances, $383K in our public educational grants. It's going to only be used for new equipment and upgrades. And like I say, in Whittier, now this is exactly the same type of system we're using in our city. Costs them $16,000 a year, yearly, plus the cost of a camera. They have five cameras. I mean, why can't we? This is, we call the sire, we have the, the sire technological system. And I don't know why we can't use this. Now, like I say, it really bugs me. Here's, we got $389, $381,000 sitting over there, and we aren't using it. And I feel that we should do the best, get the best equipment for the citizens. It makes us look like not generous, but kind of chintzy or cheap that here we are. Got all this money, all we do is put $30,000 in and new, and I feel we can get the best. I mean, we get three or four cameras or whatever. But I think we should go along with the, like the other cities do, and I feel that we should install our new cameras, a new equipment, and even we have to get a cameraman. This is what the people want, and this is what they should have. This should be, we should be a number one priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bruce. And I want to tell you, you got that in only 40 seconds, you could do commercials.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Hurford. I'd like to make a few comments. First off, I want to thank Bob from Robert Taylor's for coming down. Good Neighbor Day is something that kind of puts West Covina on the map, and we appreciate you doing it and your, your business for stepping up and promoting Good Neighbor Day. It's, it's a great day, a great image for West Covina, and we, we really appreciate Robert Taylor Flores for doing that. So those of you at home that need a florist, he's a great one, so. With regards to Mr. Moreno's comment on Mayor Tui, let me say this about Mayor Tui and sitting on that board. When they did away with redevelopment in the state of California, it's, it's still an uncertainty as to how the rules play out. But in, in essence, what they did was they took away our authority on the local level here and transmitted it to a regional board that was made up of appointed people. And of those appointed people, there's four local and there's four that are county appointed, basically. Is it three and three? Three and three. So there's six people on that board. So it is political in nature. And one of the things that, that separates us here is that we're elected officials. I mean, we are elected by the people and can be voted out of office. This appointed board is essentially a political body that everybody's trying to steal each other's money and, or steal our money, basically. And I got to say that Mayor Tui has sat on that board and defended the taxpayers of West Covina numerous, numerous times. Frustration, yeah, there's frustration, especially when somebody brings down a speaker that is set up to try and entice the rest of the board to vote for the county to, to take the money. And it's a violation of the Brown Act. I support Mayor Tui's action, and I hope it was strong enough to, that they don't do it again. But you have to understand, there's millions of dollars that are entrusted to that agency. And we are fighting hard to keep the dollars in West Covina and not to have it go to the state level, which I'll jump to Mr. Kaufman's point. And I appreciate your comments, Mr. Kaufman. And mine was not a diatribe, mine was my opinion. So it's the same thing you just did here. Everybody seems to think because we speak up here, it's a diatribe or we don't have opinions. We're leaders in this community. And when our state government has a popularity rating of around 12%, I'm one of those 12%. I am not happy with the state of California as far as what they've done to cities is atrocious. She listed a lot of social issues, which I respect, but when businesses are pulled out right and left, when we're looking at tax increases that will just maintain our services, and when we look at cities that are declaring bankruptcy, there's a fiscal crisis. And the state of California needs to be called on the carpet, and that's why I'm telling people, if they take your tax dollars with Prop 30 and 38, I think it is, they're just going to spend it and they're going to ask for more. So that's my opinion. On the graffiti issue, when, when I spoke on the graffiti issue last time, I was answering Mrs. Venger's question. Mrs. Venger started to leave, and so I made the comment that I was trying to answer her question. I don't have to apologize for that. Our graffiti program is the best graffiti program in the state of California, in my opinion. And when we went out the next day, we spent probably over $250 to research an issue that had been essentially there for six years. But we did it because that was the residents' concern. So to ask me to apologize for calling our, our program great and for having them follow up and investigate the issue, I just don't see it. So with that, let me just say this about West Covina. Good Neighbor Day tomorrow, we're a great city. We, we may not have all the resources we want, and we, we struggle every meeting. I know that the public doesn't see all the stuff that we have to deal with financially, lawsuits, employee negotiations, trying to maintain our streets, which I think we do a great job of. And as Mr. Forrest Wilkins said, our maintenance department responded right away, and that's the type of service we offer our residents. So we hear stuff from the podium sometimes that are on specific issues, but for the most part, I think we live in a great city. And as far as leadership in the future, we're going to have to have some good leaders. We want West Covina to remain the same. So whether there's term limits or no term limits, the people need to pay attention and elect people that are concerned about the entire city and the services that we offer.
Yeah, Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson.
Thank you, Mayor Tui. First of all, I just wanted to say thank you for everybody for coming. I know it's a time out of your day, but we do appreciate the input of the residents because that's how we can better do our job is by hearing from you. And I also want to thank Robert Taylor Flores, you do a great job and it is a great event. It's a lot of fun to see everybody there, and the flowers are always beautiful. So thank you for, for doing that. I just wanted to touch on the Oversight Board and the Brown Act. I understand where our mayor is coming from, and I hope that the residents can understand the fact that we have a Brown Act for a reason, and I have read it and reviewed it. What it means is if you have an item on the agenda, then that notices the people, the public, to come to the meeting if they want to hear that item. Well, what had happened is Caltrans was not on that agenda, so that didn't give the people like us, I would have liked to come if I knew that they were going to be coming and doing a presentation, we weren't noticed. So by law, that's an illegal thing for them to do. So I just want the residents to understand that we are always very cautious of that and want to make sure it's fair to you because you may want to hear all that item, and then you weren't noticed that Caltrans was coming to do this big report and would want to learn more on that. So I just wanted to touch on that. And then I wanted to ask the city manager on the next item that I wanted to briefly bring up because I know this is oral communications, and again, we also have rules that we want to be careful on as well. But there were a couple of speakers that came up in reference to the video streaming, and I know our staff has done a little bit of research. I don't know if that would be appropriate, if we could briefly do that, if it's okay with council, or if we need to agendize this. Mr. City Manager?
I couldn't give you a short response to that. I believe the attorney would be okay with that, as well as other issues, if you want me to go ahead and try to address some of the points that were raised by the audience.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Just want to go ahead and cover that. Chris?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, Mr. Pasmon. I know a couple of speakers this evening spoke with regards to the webcasting of our city council meetings. Back in, I guess, February of this year, when the city council approved the, the development of the sire system, that was an addition to the current agenda process that we had here at the city of West Covina through the city clerk's office to expand that to allow for the webcasting of city council meetings. At the same time, the city council authorized a webcasting and planning commission meetings. As you were, when we started the new agenda process for the city council, it took several months to get that new system up and running, as well as the training. And so that is what the planning commission is actually in the middle of completing, is the training, is to hope to have the planning commission meetings up and webcasting, hopefully within the next couple of meetings. That was something that the city clerk and I have been discussing with the planning department. With regards to the costs, I know that a couple of speakers spoke about the different costs for the different systems that were reviewed by the city council and the costs of other agencies. It's really difficult for staff to identify what exactly those costs are involved unless you compare apples to apples. One of the comments that we did want to compare, or examples, was a couple of comments at the last meeting with regards to the quality of the broadcast versus production quality. The quality is the viewers' quality, which is here in West Covina, we have one camera back here in the corner that is a wide angle to show the, the public at home, both the city staff, council members, and the audience in participation. When you compare that to some of the other cities that were brought up at the last meetings, including Diamond Bar, Whittier, Glendora, city staff reviewed the tapes of those council meetings as well. And when you have the wide angle shots of those councils, and just that shot, it's almost identical to that of West Covina. The difference is the production quality. Production quality is that which members of the public have come up and spoke about with regards to multiple cameras and an operator to, to make those changes. That is something that the city of West Covina is lacking in comparison to some other cities, but there's a cost to do that. Originally, we had full-time staff members that provided that service. Unfortunately, we've had reductions in the organization, including those positions. We've made cuts throughout the rest of the organization to other full-time and part-time employees. If the council was to want to move forward on providing multiple camera angles and other programs, there will be a general fund cost to staff that. If there's a part-time employee, I'm not sure on the other cities how they operate it, but state law requires that if employee works for four hours, you have to give them a mandatory 10-minute break. If they work five hours, you have to give them a mandatory 30-minute lunch. So granted, our council meetings don't necessarily always last that long. Historically, there has been council meetings where they do do that. So we're talking about having at least a couple of part-time employees that would have to staff the cameras and do the switching of the cameras here in the council chambers. So that is the difference between the quality of the, the video quality and the production quality. And that is something different. And you go to some of the other cities like Glendora or Whittier, and they put the little tablet on the bottom saying who the speaker is, what the agenda item is and that, and that is a nice production value. But again, there's a cost to do that.
Thank you. You were going to answer the other question.
Yes, just one, a brief issue on the graffiti, and I want to make sure that, in case the chief wishes to come down here and perhaps elaborate on this, but I know the issue of graffiti was addressed at the prior meeting and the fact that the walls were not matching, but I did want to make clear that once we investigated the issue, the wall was not painted by our contractor. And, and so we did check that out further, and I don't know if the chief wants to add to that or not, but I think that was the, the bottom line of what we found out on this, on this situation. But I would encourage the public to call us when they have these mismatched walls so we can go ahead and address these.
I would like to have the chief come down because due to us using Graffiti Tracker, the global positioning camera, when they take a photo of where they're painting, it lists with the police department where that person is. And our, for the last four years, our camera's never registered at that site. So neither one of our, the current contractor or the previous contractor to the current contractor ever painted that wall from our city. And I believe the, you know more about the case that actually happened. There was an actual incident there, I believe approximately six years ago.
Yeah, Homer said seven years ago. Homer himself caught the graffiti vandal, and it was painted over two graffiti contractors ago. But we do track all graffiti cases. We, we do take a photo of it with a GPS system so we know the date and the time, and we have the photograph before the damage was, was corrected. And we have all those on file for the previous four years through Graffiti Tracker.
No problem. Thank you. Is there any other questions? You were going to-
Yeah, I have some other-
Mayor Pro Tem Sanderson, sorry.
I just kind of wanted to finish up on the video. I'm sorry, Mr. Pasmon, I mean-
I'm sorry.
If we're on this-
Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, thank you. I, I wanted to ask about the resolution of the video stream. I don't know if you looked into that at all, or if maybe you can just get back to me on that, and that would be fantastic. Thank you.
I can continue. There was a comment made on the blockbusters at the corner of Amarna Zeus, and I do want to re-echo the point that was made by Mr. Redholtz that the, the matter is in the prosecutor's office, there is a due process that the owner is entitled to, and we are diligently working on getting that property corrected. I know you all have expressed concern about the condition of that property, and we are on top of that. Finally, I just want to, again, also echo the issue of the Oversight Board. There is millions of dollars at stake in terms of what this city can potentially lose. There have been numerous editorials throughout the state where schools do not expect to receive any additional revenues as a result of the dissolution of redevelopment. However, the concern is whether we keep those dollars here locally to benefit the local community or whether these dollars go elsewhere in the county. And that's what we're trying to accomplish, is keep those dollars here locally to address potential obligations that have already been committed to. And we talked a little bit about BKK at the Oversight Board meeting, and part of the concerns that we're still trying to ascertain is that there are still a number of corrective actions that need to be done in dealing with that landfill. And we want to make sure that the, the public, or at least the residents of West Covina, are not stuck on the hook for the, the rest of those obligations that have been negotiated with EPA and Department of Toxic Substances at the state level. So we do fight those, those battles very diligently, making sure that we keep those dollars local so nobody else is stuck with the bill. And so those are just some of the obligations, and keeping those dollars local is, is our number one priority.
Thank you. And to wrap it up, the discussion on the lakes project, and I know that was part of the Caltrans proposal, the way they're trying to give the money, it may put the bonds in jeopardy because the people may not have to pay the bonds anymore if they're not provided the parking as we have a parking agreement with them. So they're very complicated deals, and when you don't invite all the people down, when you only invite one of the parties down, it is very troubling to me to open up the meeting to someone, allow someone else to speak for more than five minutes. They had the right Caltrans to speak during oral communications. They chose not to. And I think since they were not on the agenda, and it was a report from our, from our agency, the successor agency, Caltrans should have spoke at that time. To allow them to speak after all the other members were told not to speak and some members were shut off, to me, it was just not a matter of fairness. I also want to make sure someone gave credit for the FEMA grant to the County Board of Supervisors that we got for our fire department, and Gloria Molina in particular. I want to make sure quite clear, the county had nothing to do with our fire department obtaining the FEMA grant for our firefighters. That is a not, that's not a true statement, and just because some people say stuff here at the podium doesn't mean it's factual. That is not a true statement. Our fire department, working with our city staff, fought to get that FEMA grant, just like our police department fights to get a lot of their grants, they get, but they're done at the federal level, not at the county level. The county doesn't really give us very little money we've ever gotten in grants. We've gotten some money for park improvements at Cortez Park through Supervisor Mike Antonovich when he was our representative. But I just want to make sure that we're being told by some members, and I, I hear you, that we shouldn't talk about the one group, but it's okay to talk about us, whether it's factual or not, and we will try to get you the information. You know, surely, what I was stating, and I understand you said part of my statement, that was true what I said. What I finished what I was saying with is I teach my kids different than our assembly member, and that's what I stated, that when a police officer gives my kids a command, that my kids are to follow through with that command, not disobey. And that's what I stated. Okay, now I understand your, your son is a police officer, and that's why, and he may be retired, I don't even know, but that's the gist of what I was saying. I did give that caveat, that when my kids and any of my friends' kids get pulled over, you're to do whatever the off, even if you think you're innocent, obey the police officer at all times, and anything different than that, that is not an acceptable behavior from any elected official in any office, irregardless if the gentleman used to serve on our city council. That's a matter of, to me, a matter of principle and fact. Some of us may have different opinions of there, but when an officer tells you to either stay in your car or get out of your car, if you do the opposite, then you may be subject to some other consequences, and you deserve those consequences. And I will always still- you're to do whatever the off, even if you think you're innocent, obey the police officer at all times, and anything different than that, that is not an acceptable behavior from any elected official in any office, irregardless if the gentleman used to serve on our city council. That's a matter of, to me, a matter of principle and fact. Some of us may have different opinions of that, but when an officer tells you to either stay in your car or get out of your car, if you do the opposite, then you may be subject to some other consequences, and you deserve those consequences. And I will always still side on obeying the law and telling my kids to listen to the officers. And for my other comments, I'm very sorry, but I was talking to just that you're a police officer, mother, and I believe you would want your son, when he's given a command at a car, to be carried out and listened to by the person he is speaking to. I think that's a matter of respect to the title they have as police officer.
Okay, we have dropped down to consent counters. Are there any items a member of the city? Yeah, I'm sorry, council member Fred Sykes.
Thank you, Mayor Toohey.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. I'll be brief. First of all, Mr. Bryant, thank you for your community involvement. And also, Mr. Kaufman, I'd like to thank you for your community involvement in that, doing that research, taking time to enlighten the community on some of the things that they might, might not have been aware of. Regarding Athens, at the last City Council meeting, Mr. Hereford made a very good point, very strong point. He will not be moved, and neither will the majority of the council. They will not be moved until we get a collective. That means more than just a few coming in to point out that since 2008, we've had this contract that, once you explore it, it reveals you will never get open bidding. There are a lot of companies out there that do trash service. And with the way the contract has been set up to the benefit of one company being able to control the city for the rest of our natural lives, that's the way the contract is set up. So that means there's no competitive bidding. Now, that's just simple. When you go shop for a car, that's why we have all these dealerships, not just here, but all around. As a matter of fact, our own staff here has decided that they would get a better deal by going to Alhambra to purchase vehicles than to purchase them here in our own city. That's just simple, open, looking for the best deal. We're not gonna get the best deal with our trash contract. And it's not about the subpar service that we get. At my home, Athens does a great job of taking care of the trash. But I'm looking at the bottom line here. Over the years, when you look at Redondo Beach, and any of you can do what Mr. Forrest Wilkins has done, you can contact Redondo Beach, and they will tell you, we pay $11.94 for our trash to be dumped to the same company. And they live by the ocean. We live by the dump. When we pay those extra fees, it's cumulative. It adds up, folks. It adds up. And there are a lot of other things in that contract that we need to review. And I'll reiterate, it may be Athens that we end up with. But right now, we don't have a choice except Athens. And when you ask the question, why is that situation in place? The answer comes back to the five of us that are sitting up here representing you. So until folks come in who think we deserve to get fair and open bidding, it's not gonna change. It's not gonna change. Now, all these issues that have been brought up tonight, whether it be the quality of what's happening in Sacramento, all the way back to here locally, there have been suggestions about term limits, capping the amount of campaign fees. First of all, I do wanna thank all of you folks here here tonight. I mean, here it is, 8:30. You could be doing something else at home. So for you folks who heeded my call to come out and get involved, and you're here tonight showing up, I do wanna say a profound thank you. I appreciate it. And hopefully, more of us will do like Mr. Bryant, Mr. Kaufman, we can all do something to make our community better. So again, more of us in West Covina need to get involved. There's 112,000-plus. We can make this city real strong if we work together as a collective. Thank you.
Fred, I just wanna make sure, 'cause you mentioned something on city staff. There's no question, we bought our cars in Alhambra. We had a choice of buying 2004, 2005, and 2006, brand-new cars sitting on Clippinger's lots, or buying 2012 cars on another person's lots. And I believe you stated that they're the same if they're new. I disagree, 'cause as soon as you drive a 2004 car off the lot, it's worth a lot less than the other police cars. So I wanna make sure we protect staff, that staff was buying a brand-new, up-to-date car over a car that's been sitting somewhere for five or six years with the oil sitting in it and everything else. So I don't believe they're truly equal. And to that point, even in the case involving Mr. Alhassen, I think the creditors don't want the cars back either, 'cause they don't view their full value either. I just wanna make sure you understand that. And when it comes to campaign limits, I wanna make sure everyone knows that we're one of the very few cities in the state of California that actually has campaign limits for donations. Most cities do not. I do not believe you can cap on the high side, that say you can only spend so much money. I don't believe that's legal. The president race has a volunteer cap, if you want matching funds. They all discard that and don't take matching funds, because instead of getting the $75 million in matching funds, they'd rather get the $750 million they're getting in actual donations. I do not believe you can cap on the high side by law. You can only do it voluntarily. The cap on overall spending, I mean, we do have campaign donation limits more than any other city around. Like I said, all of our neighboring cities, you can take unlimited amount of money from anybody.
Go ahead, Mr. Sykes. Councilmember Sykes, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Toohey. My point was not to denigrate our staff. The point was, they used the option. They had a choice. That's the point I was trying to make, is the choice factor. And we don't have that choice when it comes to Athens. We should have that choice. Thank you.
And all of our city businesses get a 1% bonus. So if your price is within 1% because of sales tax, you would be deemed equal. So there is a financial advantage given that. Okay, we're on consent counter. Is there any item on the consent counter any member of the City Council would like to remove? If not, if I could hear them.
Councilmember Satello.
There's one item, item number seven, I don't really like to remove, but I like it to be, I wasn't aware of the fact that we had low, I mean, middle-income loans for people that need house repairs, up to $10,000, and that you can get it for 10 years without any interest. And I just thought it'd be something to pull out and say, because a lot of us don't know about it, and there's a lot of people, I know in West Covina, that they need some repair in their houses, and with this, at this time, you know, with the way the financial is, and I don't know, all these people know about this. So I just wanted to make a comment about this before we just passed it and no one read the report. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent counter.
I'll second.
I second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Five oh. Around 7:30. City Manager's Office, Appointment to Community, and Senior Services Commissioner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mr. Steve Bennett for the commission.
I'll second that. Councilmember Sykes?
Yes, we're about to appoint someone, and I'm not sure. I probably have met Mr. Bennett, 'cause I do walk a lot around the city. Most people know I put in some miles. And so my question is, is Mr. Bennett here tonight?
I believe he is.
Okay, all right. So that's Mr. Bennett, all right.
He's a former Community Service Commissioner also. He was removed during the last process, when we condensed.
Thank you.
Is there any other questions, or have a motion in a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Welcome, Mr. Steve Bennett. If we can recess the City Council meeting at 8:29 to convene the successor agency meeting. Madam City Clerk, roll call for the successor agency.
Chairman Toohey?
Here.
Vice Chairman Sanderson?
Here.
Board Member Hereford?
Here.
Board Member Satello?
Here.
Board Member Sykes?
Here.
Is there any, I have no speaker cards. This is a separate agency. Is there any comments on this successor agency's agenda? Seeing none, I'll close this portion of the oral communications. I just have closed session items.
You have one consent calendar item. It's the approval of the Treasury Report.
Mine doesn't say that. It's okay. I believe you.
Motion to approve consent?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of the Treasury Report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, we, we'll reconvene, a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned at 8:30, and we reconvene the City Council meeting at 8:30 PM. We drop down to Mayor Councilmember's reports. Is there anyone wishing to report on the City Council? Seeing none, is there any AB 1234 conference and meeting reports as required by law? Is there any City Council requests for reports, studies, or investigations? Is there any City Council comments, more than we've already done?
I think we're finished.
Okay, I don't have any special adjournments tonight. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Some of.
Hold on, motion to?
Well, you're gonna be adjourning your regular meeting, but we do need to reconvene the special meeting.
So we're gonna be adjourning the regular City Council meeting, reconvening our special meeting upstairs.
Your special meeting for the City Council for the two items that were not concluded. One is public employment, City Manager, and the other one is conference with real property negotiators regarding the property of 1305 East Cam.
Do I have a motion in a second? Does that affect?
Some of.
Second.
Okay, a motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are recessed here, or whatever the correct term is.
We're adjourned for this.
At 8:31.